All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the September 3rd meeting of the Wayne County Commissioners. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's start with Attorney Ron Cross.
We don't have anything for you to take action on at this point. I am working on resolution for two properties, and I'm still not sure how, what our concept is on that. We want to use an auctioneer.
Yes.
I thought we had to use an auctioneer. We had to use a licensed auctioneer.
If you use an auctioneer.
Yeah, if you use an auctioneer.
And we're going to go with a, are we going to go with a minimum bid? Are we just going to put a reserve on the auction?
I think that minimum bid of the average of the two appraisals, but we haven't actually made a motion to.
Right. Always in the past, when we do that at Commissioners' sale, we're making a lot.
It's a hundred dollars.
Right.
Yeah, but that has no correlation to necessarily to value, it's just.
Correct.
We have that nice.
And does it, does it need to have a correlation to the value?
No. It says you'll, you'll wait till you get your appraisals, then you'll establish.
Minimum bid based on the appraisals. Doesn't say that's the, doesn't say that's, you just base it on a, I don't dig either of those.
I have no problem with, with going with the, either the average or the, or the low of the, of the appraisals.
I agree. I know Brad mentioned nicely, we ought to look, maybe do a coin average, but, but I agree, average or low, either one I'm good with, so.
Well, I, I'll take with the statute again. I think, even if you were governed by the appraisal process, under other statutes, I think you can still sell for ninety percent. Otherwise, we're all fine with it.
Ninety percent of what?
Of the lowest bid.
Lowest, of the lowest appraisal?
The appraisals would be happening.
Or the appraisals. So, ninety percent of the average appraisal or ninety percent of the lowest appraisal?
That's part of the statute, doesn't say.
And then do you disclose that?
Well, I think you disclose your appraisals. I guess my concern, wouldn't it make, I mean, we really don't, we don't want to stand in the way of the auctioneer doing, the auctioneer saying, and usually if you know you got a twenty thousand dollar property, you don't start with the auction out at twenty thousand dollars. So, I mean, I think what we really are talking about is having an understanding with the auctioneer that there will be a reserve on, on the auction.
So then do you state what that reserve is, not prior, not during bidding?
And again, if nobody, if somebody's a high bidder, but they're not at the minimum, do they have the option of paying the minimum?
Well, that's where I think, you know, we need to have some discussion, because we're kind of.
Flying blind.
Making the rules up as we go.
And again, if you look at the statute, you have to do that. It's a three-page resolution, just to make a philosophy.
I mean, I guess, I guess my preference would be to set the minimum sale price, whatever that might be, as we've done on the others, you know, not necessarily a hundred dollars, but what's your thinking?
I, I agree, we need to set a minimum bid, a reserve, and, and based off of the appraisals, and, and I don't, I'm okay going ninety percent of the lowest pre- appraisal, if that is acceptable by the statute.
I think, I think just, I think we can just make it, about make it be almost anything we wanted, as long as the pressure stays.
Sure.
And we stay, so, I mean, I, I can see, you know, do the notice, the bids will be open.
As we begin on whatever date, but the day prior, there will be a auction, a public auction. Appraisals are available to, for any first inspecting terms of it, you know, spell out the terms of the auction, and.
Because I, I do agree with one aspect that I think you made a comment, is auctions are typically, start at lower than.
Yeah, I mean, I mean ideally, you like to stimulate some competitive interest in the bidding process, and, you know, that's why the procedure that we, I had to use back in 2015 with Highland Heights, we didn't have that auction process, we just had sealed bids.
So.
It basically kept it open for another three months, or two and a half months, as two bidders kept wanting to do those bids.
I don't think we want to do that, but you had said the appraisals will be available the day before the auction, so we're going to share the appraisals with, with potential bidders?
I think that makes sense.
And, and that'd be the same as disclosing the minimum, minimum bid, then, if you disclose that.
Well, yeah, I mean, you have minimum bid versus a reserve, are two different things.
Right, because the reserve, you don't, you don't disclose.
Correct.
You just, if they don't reach those, you don't have to sell it.
And do we know who, do we know, how do we know who's been approached to be an auctioneer?
Whoever Steve approached.
Huh?
Whoever Steve approached. He's had a couple, I think, that he's talked to.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not ready to disclose that in public.
Okay. And are they both willing to do a flat fee?
We do.
One of them is okay.
Multiple so.
Okay. So, again, we need to move the ball a little bit, so do we want to establish a minimum bid, and if so, do you want to make a motion for such?
I'll make a motion as long as, again, I want to make sure we're all right with, with the statute.
He said it can be anything you want.
As long as we justify it as correct.
And it's not these statutes, it's several statutes.
That's right, right, yeah.
You're not that consistent.
Which, it's always that way, right? It's never just one.
They just pile on, they never reveal.
Right.
Please.
Okay.
I, I'm good with going ninety percent of the lowest bid, or appraisal, sorry.
Okay.
As, as a minimum bid?
As a reserve. Or minimum bid, or.
We need, I'd like to set a minimum bid.
Right.
The reserve, we can talk about later, but again, the reserve is, we decide internally that we're not going to sell it for less than X. We don't tell anybody what X is until after the auction.
Right.
And if you bid a dollar less than the minimum, than the reserve, we don't sell you the property.
Sure.
So, I, I would prefer to set a minimum bid that, so that if we get a bid, we're going to sell the property to the highest bid.
And, and if you want to, for competitive bidding, possibly, if you want to start at eighty percent less than the lowest bid.
I mean, you don't know, you can't anticipate what, what you're going to be encountering.
Right.
And all you can do is provide and maximize the options. I would suggest a minimum bid of five thousand dollars with an increment requirement of twenty-five hundred, and an undisclosed reserve that we can determine, you know, and then we need to work with the auctioneer, because if he gets to the completion of the auction, and it's under the reserve, then I think at that point, you can get the owner has a reserve on this, X dollars, so-and-so, your bid is this, so-and-so, your bid is this. Do either of you wish to increase your bid in light of the reserve? Say no, then so be it.
I would, I would make a motion to the, to the five thousand dollars with the twenty-five hundred minimum bid.
I will prepare a resolution that will incorporate, I think, everything you need.
For next week.
And it'll be, I'll make some assumptions, but I'll make them, and the auction would then be followed by a period, if it, if it doesn't sell at the auction, then I think you will have a period, I would say thirty days to receive sealed bids after the auction, and cut them off at that point.
But.
Or, or.
Otherwise, we back there.
Thirty, thirty days is arbitrary. It could be five days, it could be ten days, it could be.
Yeah, I mean, it can be, I mean, you know, it's just, it's a little hard to comply with the statute if you're that short, because the statute then says you got to give up.
Any bidder's bid becomes, any apparent high bidder's bid is exceeded, has to be given.
Why do we need to set a reserve? We don't have to set a reserve.
Don't have to.
Okay. Then let's just, let's do an auction.
We don't want to own this property.
Exactly. We want, we want somebody to buy it.
Right.
We want somebody to buy it, the high, we want the high bidder to buy it.
Right.
And if we set a minimum bid of whatever, five thousand, fifty percent.
Well, if you're, you know, with no reserve, I think I'd be a little more aggressive on my, on my minimum bid. Appraisals are going to be available, they're going to see that it's between eighteen-four and twenty thousand based on whose appraisal is leaked, and we're asking for a minimum bid of ten thousand.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. So, so, well, well, if, if we're not going to use a reserve, I, I would agree to raise it to ten as opposed to five.
Okay, so you're, you're making a motion that the minimum bid.
Are we going to wait for him to grow anything up, or we want a motion?
We can, whatever we adopt is how he's going to write the.
Right. I, I say, I say we do the ten thousand minimum bid with increments of twenty-five hundred minimum bid, no reserve.
And that's it?
And high bidder gets the property.
And we'll make the appraisals to pay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's.
You did with that? See, you thought I was going to say whatever he said, right, when I pointed it. I saw you last night. He was.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. I will second that motion. Any further discussion? I certainly hope not. I'm just kidding.
I think we want to, we don't want to do what we normally do in our Commissioners' deed sales, that's done out of convenience.
Yeah.
All right, so, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
I want to get a vote since I'm in Branson.
Not, just thank you for thinking of this. All right, so.
Appreciate the offer.
Ten thousand, increments of twenty-five hundred. All right, what else, Ron?
I see we've got a new, our new joint policy and hard copy, so I'm trying to ascertain our maximum liability limit, coverage for wrongful death in the case.
Okay.
I had a, I had a hour-long conference called, at eleven today, with the attorney for the mutuals to sign.
Okay.
There's just a lot of moving parts, but moving forward, getting close to the end of discovery, so just keep you posted.
All right.
But I think, I don't know, I'll look.
Okay. A bit of old business, we have back the signed memorandum of understanding with the Health Shelter, so that is available for approval by us, and then it will go to council at their workshop. We have a motion to approve the memorandum.
I will make a motion to approve that memorandum.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carries, so sign needs before you leave today. Anything else from the attorney, questions?
I have a question for the attorney.
Do you want it?
If I may.
Please, please. You can't make a motion.
I can't vote on it.
Question.
You were working on the interlocal agreements with the other political subdivisions for the radios.
Yeah.
And we're, those are being programmed, so we're ready to start making those visits.
That's, that's the radios themselves, not the tower.
Correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll get back on that.
Yeah, I know you've been busy, but we, I think Matthew and I will be ready to start visiting those other entities.
You can put that at the top, and then you were going to give me a, some of the speed limits, I'm saying, towns that were.
Right, we're, I'm working on that, so.
You're on top of the list right now, I'm not going to go ask somebody else.
I appreciate that.
Good deal. All right, asking, shall receive. Mr. Higginbotham.
You heard my project report this morning, really nothing more to talk about unless you ask specific questions. They have started to pour.
Saw that. Do we have somebody over there checking?
Yes.
Good.
And they were instructed not to pour any further until they had a chance to check the newly placed forms, and.
Okay, and so, so what, they have poured, it's ADA guidelines?
Correct. LWC has checked it.
Okay.
But they're not pouring anymore, telling you measures through the forms that have been set up.
I suppose gravity is not our friend in this particular case.
No, and then you heard the proxy guard folks will be here to install that on September 22nd, so as soon as this computer gets set up, we'll start coordinating with the departments to get the proxy guards and the authentication guards.
So, how, how long of a process will the actual lock installation?
I think, I think the original quote said thirty days, but all the wires have been pulled, and so it's just a matter of installing the hardware on doors and the readers on the wall, because the wires are already there.
Okay.
So, I, I wouldn't anticipate taking that long.
So, in the interim?
Yeah.
I mean, how do I, how do I get interim?
So, I thought about this, you know, there's going to be that moment in time when the old lock doesn't work.
And the new lock's not connected to that.
Exactly, and I don't have an answer for you at this point. I visualize, this is what I think, because these locks, Dale can, can change the lock, they'll have a key, but it's got a cylinder he can pull out and change it. So there's nine of them, I think. It may come to that, that they'll get keyed temporarily, because I just don't visualize being able to do two-hundred-some employees in a very short turnaround.
It'll take some time. Especially, you know, people are out on vacation or sick or whatever.
Correct. I, I have to keep asking that question to SAS, and, you know, they keep saying, several weeks.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it, but, but you're exactly right, there's going to be that.
We're going to have to have some overlap.
There's going to be an overlap. Hopefully, what I, what I would want to happen is that we can control which doors they do first.
Right.
So we can dictate that schedule, so that, for example, the Health Department, you get them their cards first, then program the lock.
Okay.
I've, I've thought of this, and I just, there's going to be an overlap.
Well.
But we'll make it as soon as.
See, this is, we know that we're, we're thinking along the sound lines there.
It's sympathetic.
Oh, absolutely, no question.
And then I did get a layout of the, of the bollards that we've talked about, but it doesn't have the computer rendition, so you can visually see what that's all looking like.
So, what do we actually have? What did you get?
So, he's got the, the area placed at the wheel, where it measured out.
Okay.
And it fits with the mall straight across, so.
Can we see that?
Yeah, I'm going to send it to you.
Okay.
But as in one.
Meaning, meaning less than, no more than five feet apart?
Correct, yeah, no more than five.
And that just requires moving two, or moving?
Just installing two.
Installing two additional?
Yeah.
So there'd be seven instead of five?
Yes, seven instead of five, yeah.
Okay.
Now, I'll, I'll send that to you so we can talk about it next week, and then next week we also need to drill down what you want to do with that fence.
Right.
And, as well as the direction of all the trees.
And the, the bollards that we'll use are the larger diameter bollards that look very similar to what we.
They look basically the same, except they're about eight inches taller and like four inches wider.
Yes, something like that, and, and so that will be at no additional cost to us.
That's the way we, that's the way we have told them. It's not our fault.
Okay. Good, good.
And then the, the tax sale is October 7th, and I've gotten the, the Veterans Officer her hotspot, she wanted a hotspot in Reuben.
Right.
And I've sent out five inquiries on the resumes, we received the applications for the direct development, so as soon as I get a response back to those, we'll schedule a date.
Okay, good.
And you heard my presentation, you replaced the position at the fairgrounds.
Right.
We still have the personnel, FMLA, extended FMLA, and one personnel on working spot, we're still sending somebody out to building grounds to assist, depending on how long it'll take to get someone hired in the vacant position, may end up sending another person out there.
Assist with the office?
Yeah, kind of.
Good.
Keep up on that.
Okay. What you, we're talking a little bit this morning about, about upcoming events, but the next thirty days is fairly busy out there, too.
Yeah, September's pretty busy, but then we start getting into holiday parties and holiday events.
So is that busier with holiday parties?
Yeah, November, before Thanksgiving, you usually have the holiday.
The czars.
The czars and that type of thing, and then you start getting to the holiday parties after that.
But September's.
Pretty busy out there.
Okay.
I see with setting up and tearing down for the events.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Higginbotham? All right. Kim was not here.
She said you called her off.
Did you? Oh, that's right, we're going to talk about it next week.
Yeah.
Yes, we can. Yeah, we have our agenda, we're working through it. I sat through your whole meeting. Just kidding. So, in front of you, we have a copy of the interlocal agreement.
Of course.
Nothing. You have a copy of a draft interlocal agreement between Wayne County Government, the City of Richmond, acting through the Board of Sanitary Commissions, it's Richmond Sanitary District, and then Wayne County Soil and Water and Union County Soil and Water. So, I was saying this was provided by SWCE. This was provided by SWCE.
It's not county.
What is SWCE?
Soil and Water Conservation District.
Oh, SWCD.
Yeah.
My apologies. We're trying to get the, trying to get the sound system fixed, too, so that's another issue, although we didn't hear any comments really about the sound system.
We're waiting for everybody to.
I was at, I was at the city council meeting last night, and they have a wonderful sound system.
They have the old style microphones.
It's really.
I tuned it in last night.
Really wonderful.
And they all had the old goose neck microphones.
They did, and it was, it was, you could hear them.
They worked real well.
You could hear them.
Innovative, they make, yes.
So.
Now.
It's set up close to my.
Those, they don't want to sneak back like something to do.
I'm leaning forward.
You do hear, but you don't know that.
That's why we're back here. Okay, so, I think the best way to describe this is that this would replace the interlocal agreement that was part of the old WUR system. The distinction is that Wayne County Government was never part of that interlocal agreement, it was WUR that was a party to it, and so we had some concerns that during that time, this person, people, were employees of Wayne County, and yet Wayne County Government was not a party to the interlocal agreement. So, this is a draft proposal from Soil and Water on a replacement interlocal agreement that would spell out how the position that has always been a part of, of the WUR arrangement would fit into the new reality of no WUR, how that position would be paid, what the entities involved in this would, would contribute, and so on. So, I think there are some, some open questions here. How much, how much is the county committing to paying? How does council propose to, to budget those dollars? How that position, to whom would this person report? There's been some interesting concepts thrown out there on, on how that might work, and so this is a starting point. I don't think we're ready to, to jump into this at this point, but the commissioners will obviously need to make a decision going forward of, of what the interlocal agreement looks like, and so this is a, a starting point. Max is actually, has been the liaison with Wayne County Soil and Water, and Barry, as you remember, was the president of the WUR board when it was finally disbanded, and so we have, we, the county has taken on some of that responsibility, and certainly the monies that were allocated to the county from the dissolution of WUR, and that money is committed to recycling efforts for the county. You'll recall that we started off with a part-time position, that person has since tendered their resignation, and so at the moment, there is no employee with the county that focuses on recycling. We've had initial conversations with Richmond Sanitary District about how we might support recycling efforts through them, whether paying for a position out of these funds that would be based at Richmond Sanitary makes sense, so we need to continue those discussions, but this particular interlocal agreement would allow for that second position, the educator position, as it was often referred to. That person also does reporting for Richmond Sanitary District, which would continue under this interlocal agreement, so Max, do you have anything you want to add to the initial conversation?
One of the changes in the concept is that this person and this position would be funded in the money collected by the county, instead of the Soil and Water District collecting the funds and then supposedly get us reimbursed or whatever. So, in order to make sure that the Sanitary District and Union County is committed to making their. So in order to make sure that the Sanitary District and Union County is committed to making their payments towards the salary and benefits, we wanted this to be in place before we approved the budget for SWCD for the next year.
So. So in the next six weeks, and we would have to have something in place.
Fifty percent from the Sanitary District, ten percent from Union County Soil and Water, and then Wayne County Soil and Water's committing ten thousand dollars, which is a payment that they get yearly from the state of, state Soil Conservation Service towards their budget. So we would be left with the remainder, which would be thirty percent less than ten thousand dollars.
Okay. So I'll get with, with HR, and I'll actually get some numbers associated with this so that we can know exactly what we're talking about, even including the salary, but also the fringe benefits, so we know what.
So then the auditor would be responsible for billing those entities to get our money back, rather than Soil and Water collecting the money.
Okay, so.
I'm sure that's spelled out clear here, or something. That's what we talked about.
Well, I'll get a copy of this for, for Mark, and he can review it and see whether they'll agree to, to doing that.
I gave a hard copy of that to Ron, but we also have it electronically that we can forward to him.
Why don't we do that, yeah?
Because it has some.
Yeah, it's on me. Yeah, that electronic.
She does not at this point, but we do, so we can share it.
I don't know if this was just modified by this Soil and Water person out there from the past agreement, or whether they, somebody put it together for them.
I think it tracks the prior agreement to some degree.
Yeah.
It's, it's similar, but obviously they had it.
That we're, we're a party to it.
But I think it's important that this agreement exists and it's a one-year agreement, not in current form, but it has been by those of you who have had it. But it gives us one year to continue working on the recycling side of things, which is totally different, but in partnership with Richmond Sanitary District. That position is fully funded in, Soil and Water's budget is twenty-six, and I would anticipate it will remain as such.
As a full-time position?
With benefits.
Okay.
We're clear that the reimbursements to us would include the fringe benefits.
Right. I think this clearly should have a signature line for the president of county council. Well, I do, and in fact, it, it actually states here, count under county, the Wayne County Government by and through its Board of Commissioners and county council. So I think there should be a separate signature block for county council.
Probably well if Ron would put together a revised three that fits our needs and get that back to them as soon as possible, so.
Yeah, you should have the physical agent of each of the bodies.
Who that is?
Soil and Water, but I assume it's their board.
Their board.
And I think it would be, it would include the executive, which is the commissioners and.
And for, for, for Richmond Sanitary District, would that also include city council and maybe the mayor?
I, I.
We could ask Pat Smoker about it.
I don't know.
That they should be included.
Exactly. I think one time I tried to drag that down, but.
Okay, okay. So, again, you're saying you need to have this in six weeks? So we need to have a draft by, probably by next week, so that we can share that back with the other entities and make sure.
You know. We need to tell them Soil Conservation, Soil and Water, that they needed to get this done. We want to make sure that the other agencies are going to be paying their part of this educator salary before we approve budget. Says the person's an employee of the district, Wayne County.
Yeah, I questioned that myself.
But I don't know, but that should be, how, the other two. How the district's budget is fun, is created, I guess.
The other two employees out there are county employees as well.
And this position has been a county employee.
Correct.
Right. So that should be, so I should say they're county employees. And I, and then the supervisor of that position was the president.
The president of their board.
Of the board, not this committee. This committee only meets twice a year.
It's to set goals.
But it says this committee shall supervise the work of this person, and I think that's.
I don't think that's correct. I really, I don't think that provides enough supervision.
That's a change from the other agreement. The other agreement said to supervise the, whatever that position, that appointed supervisor.
It's an electric, they have a board, call them supervisors instead of directors.
So they call them.
And that's, but the, or the chairman or president of that board was the supervisor of this employee.
Because they could have day-to-day contact with, if they wanted to, as opposed to two times a year.
Right.
Well, they meet monthly as well. That group meets monthly.
It's monthly, right?
Yes.
And the job is for, I have to go to Kim.
Yeah.
Because it's very similar to the previous, but.
It is different, right, okay. Okay. Anything else you guys want to share on this?
Sounds good to get this wrapped up.
Get it moving forward, and I'll contact Pat. Get those discussions on recycling ramped up as well as talk about this. All right. Yes.
Well, I do have a question for either of you, or Steve, it's totally different. Just came to mind. I received a quote from Carol Electric to do the second phase of wiring that we discussed out there. He sent me the quote to do that on both locations. I sent it to Matthew. Do you have to approve that quote, or is it just a continuation of that, that project?
Does it fit within the budget for that project?
If it's within that contingency, yeah. It's gonna be like eight thousand dollars total.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll come in tomorrow.
There you go. Public meeting. Now, that chair might not be available all the time.
I know.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay. Steve, you're, you were done?
Yes.
Bobby?
I don't have any.
You don't have anything? Well, okay. We have some claims here that we talked about with commissioners this morning on the LWC claims. Steve, do you want to, do you want to say anything about these?
No, that one.
Part of that, part of, one of the amounts in there includes the debris removal. Okay. It's about ten thousand dollars for that, so it's part of the seventy-eight thousand.
Yes.
So there's two.
It's part of it, of their claim, their design work on the elevators.
Correct.
And they'd like to see their contract and that, because I want to make sure that the instruments of use clause in that contract gives us continuing rights to those plans, because that project didn't, I believe.
Before, before we pay these?
No, I want to, that's kind of what you're paying for.
Okay, so we don't, we don't want.
We can take a look, it may be very clear. I mean, I, you know, the project wasn't abandoned prior to the bid phase, but there's no bids.
Yeah, he has said to me verbally that obviously they won't have to do the design work again, but I'll get you a copy of it.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we want to go anywhere else, but I'm just saying.
We should own.
That there can be very restrictive language in there, not just in the AIA, that's doing the owner and our AE and other.
What, what would keep us from paying these bills? What would keep us from paying these? This is what we're. We're gonna say we're not gonna pay them unless you alter the contract?
No, I don't think so. I mean, this is work that's been done and.
Under contract.
We're at, we're at the current contract, so I, I think we're obligated to pay it.
We pay it. I think the issue is, you know, who's, if, if there is an issue, it doesn't relate to, no, we pay it, we have to pay it.
Yeah, right.
It relates to what our rights are, and it's in theirs in the documents.
All right.
Prepared.
So we've got two claims here. One for seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which we will pay out of, or proposing we pay out of the contractual line item within the Wayne County Edit Fund. The other claim for six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents, proposing would be paid from the County Edit Fund, the line item thirty-three, nine, twenty, commissioners funding. They're similar, but because we had so many projects going on from the help program and ARPA funding that we set aside a hundred thousand dollars for, for just this kind of work, engineering and architectural planning. So with that, I would look for a motion to pay both of these claims to LWC.
I'll make a motion.
And I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Then we have a claim to pay our contribution to the Help the Animals Shelter. And this is the thirty thousand dollars that we have, the memorandum of understanding that we have approved and that their board has approved. It'll still need to go to, to the council. So I guess we ought to.
Where do those funds come from?
This is fifteen thousand dollars from Commissioner contingency and fifteen thousand dollars from our animal welfare line. But I think.
Pending their approval.
Why don't we do that pending?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we pay that pending council's approval on funding.
I will second that motion, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Do you have claims and minutes?
I do. I have commissioner's meeting minutes, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second. Further discussion, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I have an executive session meeting minutes dated August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
And then I have the following claims. Boston Mutual dated August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Local State Payroll Taxes, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Perf and Federal Tax dated ninth, five, twenty twenty-five. Gorgon Smith and Dunflex dated nine, five, twenty-five. Payroll dated nine, five, twenty-five. And general claims dated nine, three, twenty twenty-five. And jury pay dated nine, four, twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve those.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Aaron?
That's all I have.
Okay, Steve?
Nope.
Bobby? Mark? Simona, nothing?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Ron, anything else? I have nothing else. There's no further business for today. Forgot to move the gavel up here, so I'll just say meeting adjourned.